So, I want to explain what's going to happen next in the process. I think you all are more familiar, for those of you that haven't been on any of the other[10.44][10.44]interviews. Now, you're going to have an opportunity, as a board, to spend some time in your own reflection. You have the sheets that people who have interacted with the candidates have shared with you, both here at the interview and I think people had an opportunity to fax feedback from the sites today. I don't know how many of those you got. But, I'm going to give you some opportunity right now to read and look at your notes and do your own personal reflection about the candidate. And I'm going to give you the matrix, the consensus matrix, and I'm going to ask you to fill it out and I want you to circle your, of the two candidates, the candidate you prefer. Please know that this isn't a vote. This is of the two candidates, who do you prefer? Because you prefer one over the other doesn't mean the other one is unacceptable. This is just so we can see where you are and so we'll know how to convene the conversation after that. Okay? Any questions?
Thank you.
And how much time do you want?
That was my question. How much time do you guys need?
Couple more minutes, please.
Okay.
Marlene, just because I'm the way I am, we're going to circle the number of the choice that we're making, okay? At the end of the day, I would have to go through and...
Carol is hungry. Carol needs dinner.
Is everyone done?
No.
You pick your choice. Yes, like we did. Nothing at the bottom, just at the top.
Oh, at the top.
Like we did before, at the top.
I see it now. It's just when it's small.
Circle and vote because of everything.
Yeah, before it was...
Yeah. I didn't even see the one or two up there until you said it. A little slow.
Do you want to? Did somebody not turn yours in?
No, I just didn't see it coming.
Does our names on there?
Mm-hmm.
Oh. Did we have ours with our names on it?
Yeah.
Was your, did yours say your name?
I didn't write my name.
No, I had it written on there.
Oh, okay. But we got the right ones?
Yeah. I think I gave you the right ones.
how you saw them and who you preferred.
Okay. So, I get to do a master sheet, I'll make a...
No.
So, as it looks here, five board members preferred Dr. Holt and two board members preferred Mr. Albrecht. So, what I usually like to do here is I'd like you to speak positively to each other about why you support a candidate, not why you don't like somebody. If we have to get to that, okay, but let's start with, you know, with the positives. Before you make a motion to vote and so on, I like to see if you can come to consensus. So, it seems as though a majority of you preferred Dr. Holt over Mr. Albrecht. Dave and Sally preferred John over Shelley. And so, if, is there a, so what we need to know is that, is this a preference? Is it, you're opposed to, you know, Dr. Holt? So, we're trying to get to consensus if we can, and if we can't, then, you know, we'll vote. So, but mostly I want you to share your thinking with each other. So, Sally and Dave, you want to share your thinking with your colleagues about why you are supporting or prefer John over Shelley?
Actually, I'd prefer it to be opposite, since we're the minority.
Okay. I mean, I don't, it's fine. It's fine. So, you want them to tell you why they support, support?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that all right with you guys?
Sure. Because we're all going to speak about it.
No, that's fine. Absolutely. Yeah. Okay. So, who wants to start?
I'll start.
Well, go ahead. Marlene, go ahead.
I'll start. Yeah. In the beginning, I was, you know, I've been very, very torn. This is a very, very important decision and it's like, you know, you know, I'm, you know, new to the board, but, you know, I've seen John, he's a great guy, but then when it comes to a lot of these questions, like when Dr. Holt was up here, she answered every question, gave examples, and I felt more comfortable. And even like being a people person, because like, and to be honest, I was a little, you know, torn, like, okay, well, she's coming from a different place, but once you get to meet her and get to know her, like she said before, when it comes to community events, it's about getting people to trust you, that's so important in this community. And we need to get a bond passed, and I like the way she said, "My babies." I love that, because she has, you know, she's excited about the district, you know, making that move to move to this, this state. That's a very important move and a dedication and like the different experiences with the behaviors, because I do, I like to talk to people in the community, even the teachers. I'm like, hey, what's the problem in the district? A lot of them says behavior, like, a lot of them tell me that. So, if there's ways we can help that in the why, we need to market our community and our school district to the people saying, this is why you should bring your children here. So, this interview tonight honestly changed my, you know, perception.
Okay. All right. Shauna, want to speak? Sure.
One, I think that Dr. Holt is, the only way I can probably explain is being Dr. Hamala on 10, when it comes to personal relationships. I think that the obstacle of being from another place is something that can be quickly remedied, because we have a phenomenal staff in place that is, you know, the superintendent doesn't do it by itself. We have other ones that will help. I think with Dr. Holt here and still having Dr., or Mr. Albrecht, we'll have a dream team and I can see this district going, moving the strategic plan forward and that we, and we'll just grow, because we'll have the people that we already have in place, as well as her together, moving us forward. And I think it'll be a great relationship and I think we'll do the district, it'll do the district justice to have her in place.
Okay. Carol, what do you want to say?
What do I want to say?
What do you want to share?
I was very impressed with, with Dr. Holt. She comes with a plethora, a wealth of knowledge base behind her. She's had a lot of experiences that I know that not everybody has had. She has put herself in the way of educational, social growth that most people only dream of. She's had opportunities given to her that most have not had, and I think we need to cash in on what she has to offer and what she will bring to the table for us. This is a major position in this community. We need somebody who's dynamic and can go out there and sell our school district the way that Michelle was able to do that, to gain the trust of people, to show them that Wayne Westland is a good place to raise your kids, that we do good things in the classroom. And I think she has an exuberance behind her that will lend itself to that.
Tom?
Well, there are certainly a lot of things that could be said for Dr. Holt. I jotted down four things that I think are worthy of mention. Her breadth of knowledge of educational issues, I think it's, it's amazing how much she knows about curriculum, how much she knows about collaborative work, how much she knows about students who come from diverse backgrounds. I was impressed by the degree that, of interest that she's shown in Wayne Westland. She speaks very knowledgeable about our district, given that she's someone who's only been here a couple of times. I was impressed with her vision of what Wayne Westland could become, but mostly I think it was her obvious intelligence that impresses me most.
Okay. Fred, what do you want to add?
Well, I've gone back and forth on this in my, now in my 14th year of board service. Obviously spent along, a lot of time with Mr. Albrecht. Quite frankly, I liked her enthusiasm. A lot can be said, as Mr. Buckloo just did and others, but I like the enthusiasm that she brings to the table.
All right. Sally, you want to lead off with your thinking?
It's really kind of a difficult situation, because you're asking me to basically justify my vote, when, you know, it, it's clear what the answer's going to be. So, it's kind of, I feel a mute point at this point, to dig deeper into it.
Well, this wasn't a vote. This was who preferred whom.
It's not going to change.
Well, if you wanted to try and advocate to, you know, change people's minds, that's what you have an opportunity to do. If you don't want to do it, it's okay.
It's not my intent to try to change people's minds. People had opportunity to hear and see everything that I did.
Okay.
And I did my homework and I listened to what was said, and some people interview well, some people don't. Some people we have the opportunity to have seen the good and bad side of, some people we haven't had that opportunity to. So, with everything that was presented to me and everything that I took upon myself to think about, look for, see and do and hear, that is what I felt was best for the whole community, not just a certain group, and also looking at all aspects of everything that we are going to need upcoming in our district. I'm looking beyond human resources and social emotional health. Are those important? Absolutely. But we have a lot of other business that the superintendent does, so I'm looking at all of the needs that need to be met.
Okay. David?
You know, I believe that stability is really the most important thing for our school district. I believe it's of paramount importance, and I've been involved in superintendent searches before. 18 years ago, we did, I was involved in essentially this very same thing, and prior to that, the district had had two superintendents, both of whom were very able, had great credentials, but honestly, they weren't that stable, not for our district. People often come to our district with a perspective that they know, they know what's best here, and they find out that Wayne Westland is a little bit of a, we hold it, we hold it real close here. And the fact that one candidate doesn't know who the stakeholders are, they don't know their representatives, you know, in Mr. Albrecht's 90-day plan, he mentioned that in four to five weeks, he would be engaged in configuration issues. And I thought, that's appropriate. Just four or five weeks is just about all we have, to start being involved in that. And given the heavy lifting that we're going to have to do in just a matter of weeks, actually, asking somebody, no matter how talented, to come here, learn who everybody is, make relationships with all the board, embrace a strategic plan that she read and didn't author, and work with a group of people who themselves have been working towards this end, and, and I believe, even though the coaches moved on to something else, I think that the coaching staff can, can move this, can move this project forward. And it has such importance for us. It, it's almost as if all of the other issues have to wait until these issues are decided. It's a lot to ask, and I've seen people come here with the best intentions. Superintendent Thomas came here and, and left amid conflict with the board that he was not able to create a harmonious relationship with. Dr. Moore, an incredibly talented individual, was here for two years and left in advance of a bond issue. And I've had the opportunity to work with Dr. Hamala, and she gained my confidence almost on the very first day that she took, that she took this job, because there was a, an event later that day, and I remember watching her walk down the sidewalk to go to the event, which was honoring students, but it was her very first day. And I thought, that's exactly the kind of work that, that we needed from her, especially at that time. And when she came here, she looked at the available talent that was in this district and wisely chose a cabinet that I frankly think all of them are qualified to be superintendents. And, and she chose John Albrecht for the position that she chose him for. And let's remember, you know, John is sometimes saddled with some of the directives that he's had to implement on behalf of, not necessarily his directors, but rather, he was given the job to do it. And I think there's going to be a lot of that kind of lifting in the next few months. He certainly enjoyed Dr. Hamala's support, as evidenced by the fact that she wrote a glowing letter of recommendation for him for this process. And, and frankly, I feel the same way about it. I also enjoy the fact that this process was carried out the way it was, because we can support one person without being against the other. And it wouldn't be fair to be against Dr. Holt, because I don't even know Dr. Holt. And really, for me, that's the crux of the issue. I know this school district. I've, you know, I've been here for 40 years, and I know you're not going to come here from outside. Dr. Hamala is probably one of the best people that I know in creating relationships, and I think it took her every bit of six months to get where she could effectively work on behalf of the district with all the people. These things concern me, because I don't think we have the luxury of time. And, you know, when I first got the phone call from President Shawna Walker about Dr. Hamala leaving, I thought to myself, geez, just a moment ago, we were sitting with a five-year deal, we had a five-year strategic plan, I had just won a six-year seat, the citizens of the county had, had passed an enhancement millage that basically pulled us back from the jaws of financial ruin. Things were, are in a position to where we could concentrate on, on these issues that we have coming before us. And as a member of the Fight AIDS Committee, I know how, how important this work is going to be. It's a lot to ask any talented person to come in and carry the ball. And by our own admission, she comes with a lot of experience, a lot of background, in a much larger district, in a much different setting. It's going to be very difficult for her, I think, to put her whole life's experience aside to follow through with a plan that she has to learn herself. So, I don't think necessarily that she brings any more talent to the job than John has. I think that, given that, and given the fact that he knows who the stakeholders are, and he's, works well within the community, and I know some members of the community, even in some of the letters that I received, they made comments about how he's dealt with people in the past. I assure you, anybody who has a job in leadership for as many years as he's been here, or anywhere, they're going to have detractors and they're going to have people that support them. And I think under the circumstances, he's grown. I think that the leadership that had the unanimous support of this board recognized that he, that he's grown, and that's why I support him. Frankly, I want things to move along, just as you designed them when you brought Dr. Hamala here, and when you developed a strategic plan. I think it's a good plan. I saw the board that was not together prior to that vote unanimously on so many things from that point on. It's as if her skills and the directive of the strategic plan brought this entire board together, and we marched down the road trying to accomplish the same goal. And I think that a break from that team is, is a break from that. And I, I, that's what concerns me, because I believe that of all the things that we have to deal with, the strategic plan does not stand without financing to support it. It just doesn't. And, and that's, that's a heavy lift, even for someone who's been here a long time, for someone who hasn't. I don't know if it's possible in the timelines that we have. And like Sally said, I mean, I, I appreciate that everybody has their opinion on this. I appreciate that the community, at least with respect to me, has allowed me to, to think about this, without trying to lobby me or pressure me in any certain way. I think that the process, I appreciate what you've done at this point, Marlene, to try to keep it on a professional level. I think people that are interested in possibly coming to our school district will be looking at how we treat candidates for this job, and I think it all played well, so I'm, I'm happy with that. I would just like to stay, I would just like the stability that I think John would bring to the table.
You know, I felt the same way in the beginning, but when they had these specific
questions on how are you going to implement these plans, and like, some of the answers were kind of vague with Mr. Albrecht, but with Dr. Holt, they were explained very, where I can understand them and I can see exactly where the district is going to move, because I felt really, honestly, really torn today, coming here. But I said, you know what, I'm going to have an open mind, and then reading the community feedback, that's very important, to see what does our teachers think about it? You know, that's very important, because they're the ones that have to work, you know, under this new supervision. So, I took everything into consideration, weighing this and certain things, you know, you know, with the, being personable. I've seen a lot of complaints with that, and I'm, you know, just, that kind of weighs on too, you know, because we're already having a hard time keeping principals, teachers in the district. We can't lose any more people. So, I do understand the stability, definitely get that, understand about the strategic plan, but at the same time, we have to take everything into, you know, accommodation and see what's the best fit for the solution. But I want to know, what are the specific answers? How exactly are you going to implement these plans, especially with the question with transients? That's very important. We have, and she gave exactly what we're going to do to try to stop that, stop the bleeding. So, my biggest decision, one, was the answer to these specific questions, and then the community feedback on what everybody else felt in the community as to who would be the best picked, because I know this is a very important decision for the district.
You know, you, you've conducted a, you know, pretty thorough process, and you have two candidates that are quite different from each other, both qualified, so you're looking at, it doesn't appear to be that you're looking at somebody unqualified, somebody qualified. You have differing opinions based on what you think the skills and abilities are leading the district forward. And I know that you've talked a lot about the strategic plan, the importance of it, the development of it, the communication of it, and so you're looking at that, and also looking at beyond the strategic plan, I think, as you evolve. So, you have a lot of things in your head that you're looking at. And I wanted you to, for the sake of your own dynamics and harmony, I wanted you to come at this from different points of view, but to try and gain consensus if you can. If you can't, you know, at this point, you've all spoken to people, which you feel pretty strongly about who you want to support. So, Madam President, I think it's kind of back to you to decide, do you want to make a motion? I don't know if any further dialogue is going to be beneficial. If you think it is, any of you, please keep talking. But it sounds like people's minds are pretty set here. And I don't know that you're going to change each other's minds at this point. I thought if there was a possibility, then I would continue to try and facilitate the conversation, but I'm not really sure that that's going to be effective, so.
I have something to say. I think if we're going to move forward and take a vote, this vote needs to show board unity, and it needs to show a seven-zero vote, because anybody coming into this position does not want to know that they do not have the full support of the board. This is what we did when Dr. Hamala came on board. We did have dissenting people at the time, but when push came to shove and that vote was taken, it turned out to be a seven-zero vote.
You know, as a board, we are all, we, that's what makes a board unique, because we all bring different personalities and different beliefs. So, at this time, we just, I'll, I'll take a motion, whichever way we want to go. I'm opening up the floor for a motion.
Madam President, I make the motion that we vote, and that we vote on Dr. Holt's name first.
Okay. I have a motion by Dr. Weaver. Any support?
Support.
I have a support by Mrs. Medel. Roll call vote, please. Ms. Madison?
No.
Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
And Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show, let's see, 6-1. 6-1. Motion carries. So, at this point, is there anything else that you wanted to add? Dr. Davis?
No, I, I just, I know... We did have dissenting people at the time. But when push came to shove and that vote was taken, it turned out to be a 7-0 vote.
You know, as a board, we are all, we, that's what makes a board unique because we all bring different personalities and different beliefs. So at this time, we just, I'll take a motion, whichever way we want to go. I'm opening up the floor for a motion.
President, I make the motion that we vote and that we vote on Dr. Holt's name first.
I have a motion by Dr. Weaver. Any support?
Support.
I have support by Mrs. Medel. Roll call vote, please. Ms. Madison?
No.
Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. And Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show, let's see, 6-1. 6-1. Motion carries. So at this point, is there anything else that you wanted to add? Dr. Davis?
No, I just, I know that sometimes it's important and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to dig into a lot, Sally, but I just want to mention.
Oh, I'm fully aware. I've always been the minority vote. And that was part of what I signed up for when I first decided to run, to be on school board, was to be able to be a voice for, as I said, we all have groups that we talk to and we all have groups that we're in support of. And part of that is using my voice and my belief. That's why we have a vote. I don't believe in rubber stamping votes. I can fully support my board's decision because that's what you do. So as a professional and as an elected official, I will fully support the majority vote. But that doesn't mean I have to be dishonorable to my ethics and give a vote that's not honorable to my beliefs.
I understand that. So I'm glad that you said what you said, though. That's what I was hoping you would say, that even though you believe that, you know, in the vote that is cast, that the board has, in the majority, voted to offer the position to Dr. Holt and she knows that she will have your support, even though you preferred another candidate. That's what's important. That's what's more important than the vote itself, is that the incoming superintendent knows that he or she will have the support of the whole board, whether they were voted for or not. So that's why I want to make sure.
Oh, absolutely. For me, it's about honesty and integrity. I voted the way my heart told me to and what I felt. And I can fully support my board's decision, that we are all one vote.
Um, Dr. Davis, I just wanted to make a statement. I appreciate each and every one of you. And Ms. Madison, that's what I respect about you the most. It's because you do, you say what you mean and you, you know, you stick to it. But I also, at this point, we just did this vote and it came across almost as if it's a sad time. It's not sad. This is a new beginning for our district. And we have to believe that what she told us is her word. So we have to, if we call ourselves family, and that's what I stand on every time, is that we're family. So now we have decided that we're going to have a new member in our family. We have to welcome her with open arms and have an open mind about what we're going into. Because if someone's going in with bad feelings, whether it be staff or cabinet or boards, we're not going to grow. So we're going to have to, we're going to have to work together to grow. And we haven't lost Mr. Albrecht. He said that, you know, no matter what it is, he's here. So looking at that, it's a win-win. I mean, he's amazing. He would make an amazing superintendent. But at this time, I, we felt as a board that we needed to go into a different direction. But we still have him. So that's the amazing part of that. You guys have got, you just don't realize what happened. We are, we're going to be dynamic because we have two amazing people. Not just two, but we have two other deputies in the rest of our staffs that's going to come together and we're going to make this district A1. I mean, it's not going to always be roses. I understand that. But we'll be able to get through the hard times because we'll be, come together as a family, we'll come together as a unit. And it'll be okay. It really will be. So what I need to do is get this feelingness out the room right now. I just, it's not a bad thing. We have not done something bad. And that's just what I wanted to get across. Because it doesn't feel good to be in here.
So it felt better the last time because you all said that you wanted support.
Well, you know, well, last time, we didn't have to go any deeper. It was just one person, so that was the difference. But it's not like somebody just died. It's a good thing. It's a really good thing. And there shouldn't be long faces. If you believe in what you just did, then you should stand on what you just did and believe in it. And it's going to be okay. So did you want to add anything else to that? Okay. I'm going to move on on the agenda.
There are other matters, you know.
Yeah.
You have to call and offer the jobs.
And then we have to go into negotiations.
So normally, while you can conclude your business here, I'll talk to you about how that usually, I think the board chair to call and offer the position. I always take care of the other phone calls of people who did get the job. But I think it's appropriate for the board chair to make the phone call.
So, just so, to be clear, so the next step is that we still have to offer the position and then we have to go into negotiations for the contract. So those will be the next steps, just so you know. So moving on to item number 172.18, citizen comments, non-agenda items. Mr. Madison?
I'm Madison. I agree with you, Shawna. This room is depressed. Every one of these board members voted out of depression. It doesn't seem right. It seems like we just shot and killed somebody. It's amazing to me. I just don't get it. And I don't understand how, what Mr. Cox said was very appropriate. We're going in a direction and we're, that locomotive was running downstream and going to where I will go three minutes.
It's okay. I'm going to play it out for whoever.
The locomotion left the station already and now we just stopped it in its tracks and we're starting over. Her strategic plan that she pointed out here says renegotiating contracts in two years from now. It was very clear in what she posted up there was going to be changed and not the way we've been planning it. So I'm just really concerned. Carol, you look horrible about the vote you just made. It's amazing to me.
You know, and I'd like to tell you, I'm not depressed, but we're not going to have a dialogue either.
Right, I understand that. I'm just talking about your reaction and what we see out here. So it is what it is and we'll see what happens.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Ann Heinecke. I am a parent of the district. My daughter's graduated. I live in the city of Westland and I'm also an employee of the district. And I want to thank you for voting for Dr. Holt. I understand both sides. I've sat in almost all the meetings. I've listened. And I think Dr. Holt will be a wonderful asset to our community. I don't see any, there may be slowdown, but I don't see a big slowdown from what she says. She's coming in running. She's not going to be one that sits back and lets everybody else work. So I myself am not feeling like I've been to a funeral. I'm elated and I just want to say thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. At this time, we'll move on to 173.18, review and recommendations, Board of Education. Mrs. Madison?
The only comment that I'd like to make tonight is since we are at the point now where we are moving forward, some of the things that has come to me over time, I still hear a lot of things about the past. And it's not even, I know tonight there was some mention during the interview about Mr. Albrecht. But I still hear some of the staff and community keep referencing back to the past. And I think at some point, we got to stop nurturing those old wounds and we got to let it go and move forward, regardless of who the new superintendent is. We're becoming just as bad as the people we're complaining about if we continue to want to lick our wounds and let them be there and not heal. So as part of being family, I think what we need to do is stop the dialogue of the past. It's, we need to lock it away and move forward. And that's the only comment that I want to make tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Madison. Mr. Cox?
Nothing more tonight.
Thank you. Mrs. Hines. Ms. Hines?
I'd just like to congratulate Dr. Holt. And like I said, I really enjoy having the input of the community and have a good night.
Thank you. Dr. Weaver?
Nothing.
Thank you. Mr. Buckaloo?
Three years ago, our decision was pretty easy. Dr. Harmala stood out way above everyone else. Tonight, we had two candidates that were pretty outstanding. Nobody is going to match Mr. Albrecht's affection for the school district. That's a given. That I felt that Dr. Holt was a better choice in no way suggests that there was anything wrong with the interview process for Mr. Albrecht. I'd like to echo what Mrs. Madison said. It's time for us to hit the past and kind of lay our heels in and move forward. We have a plan in place. We have wonderful leadership already in the district. And I think we're adding another outstanding leader at the top. Time will tell, but hopefully it won't, you know, this board will be behind our superintendent just as it continues to be behind the district.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo. Mrs. Medel?
I want to thank you, Dr. Davis, for coming and working with us in our process here. It's never easy. It's hard work. And you've made that job just a little bit easier. And I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Mrs. Medel. I echo my board. I also want to say thank you to each and every one of you for coming out and spending your time going through the process. I know it's a long process, but it's a necessary process and it's an important process. I also want to commend and congratulate our staff. You know, we got caught up on the superintendent's search, but yesterday was the first day of school. And we had an amazing start. And I want to say thank you. And due to you all, that's why we were able to get off to a great start. And that just tells us where we're going to go from here. So thank you again. At this time, unless you had something else you wanted to say? Okay. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Medel, supported by Ms. Hines. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries.